I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting for the city of Springdale for April 2nd. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Brown, if you take role.
Mr. Gleves.
Present.
Mr. Jacobs.
Present.
Ms. McFarland.
Present.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup.
Present.
Mr. Vanover.
Present.
Mrs. Webster.
Present.
Mr. Anderson.
Present. Counselor in your package, you received the minutes from our March 19th meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
The minutes are approved with five affirmative votes and two abstentions, Ms. Sullivan Weiscup and Ms. McFarland. All right, moving right along, next up on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Public Health Week. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's always a wonderful thing to be able to celebrate our health department and our health commissioner, Matt Clayton, who's present. And with regard to the proclamation, whereas started in 1985, National Public Health Week takes place each year during the first week of April to recognize the important contributions public health has made to our nation. National Public Health Week also highlights issues that are important to creating a healthy future. And whereas the Springdale Health Department works to prevent disease and promote good health within the city of Springdale, Ohio. And whereas this year is the 30th anniversary of nationally celebrating Public Health Week. And over that time, significant strides have been made in public health. And whereas the Springdale Health Department has created and supported a strong public health system that engages residents and community partners to foster a healthier community. And whereas a hallmark of the city of Springdale's Health Department is extensive collaboration among a wide range of public and private sector partners. And whereas this year's theme of National Public Health Week 2025 is the future of public health starts here, strengthening the public health workforce. And whereas in April, the nation celebrates National Public Health Week to recognize the important role that public health departments play in sustaining and improving community health to create a brighter future. And whereas the Springdale Health Department is committed to ensuring that Springdale families are healthy and its collaborative efforts with individuals, families, community partners, universities, and policymakers will promote good health among future Springdale generations. Now therefore, I, Lawrence C. Hawkins III, Mayor of the city of Springdale, hereby proclaim April 7th through the 13th of 2025 is National Public Health Week in the city of Springdale. Commissioner Clayton, if you can come forward, please.
As soon as I took my coat off and heat.
Mayor Hawkins, thank you for the kind words. Those were a lot of wherases. Part of the theme for National Public Health Week 2025 is your health is our mission. And at the city of Springdale Health Department, this is a concept that we live in and we believe it. We seek to promote health for every member of the community. We realize that this is a privilege. And we only have this privilege because we have support from the community, from the elected officials, from our mayor, and from city administration, and also from partnering agencies, Springdale Fire, Springdale Police, the staff of the Springdale Community Center, and countless more. Recently, we implemented the e-clinical works database system. And that resulted in a tremendous increase in efficiency for our clinical partners. The small investment in efficiency will result in a great increase in our ability to serve the community. Not only at our vaccination clinics where we're serving, literally able to serve more than twice as many people as we were serving before, but also when we're visiting homebound residents. This could not have happened if we didn't have the support of our leadership. And I'm also proud that the city of Springdale Health Department has developed a positive relationship with local colleges and universities. And really, over the last few years, we've emerged as a respected source of workforce development for the local public health region. This is, this is great work, but again, it doesn't happen in a vacuum. We're only able to do this because we have your support and your partnership. So I'd like to thank our mayor, our city council, and our city administration for your partnership and your support as we continue to promote health in the city of Springdale. Thank you so much.
All right, staying with Mayor Hawkins, we have next, I believe it's for Mayor Hawkins, we have a presentation from the Duke Energy Community Relations Liaison, Chris Harding. Do you want to come forward? I believe the man of honor is also our mayor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, mayor and members of council, members of the administration, I first off, want to introduce myself to those of you I haven't met yet. My name is Christopher Harding. I'm on the community relations team at Duke Energy. I am your representative to the company. And I'm delighted to be here on behalf of the foundation to present a check for $7,500 to support the Mill Creek Connector Study. And I will say, just as a quick anecdote, I previously came from Hamilton County. I worked for Commissioner Denise Streethouse. And I know this was a huge priority for her to help finance the trail and the studies that have occurred since. So for me, this feels full circle. And I'm very excited to support what I hope would be not only lifestyle improvements for city residents, but also providing access to the multitude of trails that we have in our region. I think it's great also in terms of providing multimodal modes of transportation for folks, whether that's getting to jobs or the grocery store or what have you. So again, I'm delighted to be here. Thank you for the opportunity, and it's wonderful to meet you all. Thank you.
Before we do the check presentation, I want you to know we have meetings on the first and third Wednesday of the month. Anytime you want to bring a check to us, you are welcome to come.
I will keep that in mind.
And again, thank you, Mr. Harding, for coming out and seeing us. I do remember you from past years with Ms. Streethouse. I was trying to place the face and the name, but thank you for bringing Full Circle. And again, anytime you want to bring checks, we can make time on the agenda for you.
I will keep that in mind. Thank you so much. And I do want to acknowledge Matt Martin, my colleague, and on our corporate communications team here in support as well. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, keeping things moving along, next on our agenda is communications. Ms. Brown, are there any communications for counsel this evening?
No communications, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, next up on the agenda is communications in the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel for any reason. You simply need to come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you'd have up to five minutes to speak to counsel. The floor is now open for communications in the audience.
Good evening. My name is Todd Williams. I'm in the business at 11325 Springfield Pike. It's a dental practice in the Springwood Professional condominiums. I've been a business owner in Springdale for 26 years. I'm here because of the zoning infractions at 11285 Springfield Pike. It's the old Maple Knoll Professional Building. It's empty, vacant now. Maple Knoll is having a company based in Monford Heights, 20 miles away, to use that facility as a mulch distribution facility. So what entails is every day for the past six weeks, we have to endure the smell of a large pile of mulch. On Monday, it ranged probably 20 feet wide, 10 feet tall, and 40 feet long. We have to hear heavy equipment come in, and so it rattles our building. We have the constant beeping of the equipment in reverse. But worst of all is when these double-long dump trucks come in and have to get that last bit of mulch out, they have to thump the bed. And my office is 50 feet from this. And so I'm a dentist, I know you guys love going to dentists, but people, you know, when you're working on them and the building's shaking as you're working on it, that's unsustainable. And we've had many patients complain, many patients, can we just reschedule? So there's a tangible financial loss to my practice for doing this. Now, there's also eight other dental and medical facilities in that complex that have to endure this. The company that's doing this is, again, based in Monford Heights. So why am I here? Well, a year ago, it was starting to get bad. And so Ron Volmer, our condo association manager, he contacted Rich and Dan at the building department, but never heard back from them. So he went to the company Upscale Landscaping and talked to a guy there. And they said, oh, don't worry about it, we're about done. This is our last year here, they're going to tear, Maple Knoll is tearing down that building. You won't have to deal with us again. Well, towards the end of the year, the salt came. They have a concrete revetment, a storage area for the mulch and salt. And it's like, well, that's curious, but maybe it's just the end of the year. Well, for the past six years, six weeks, we've had to endure this, this smell, sound, and it's getting a little old. So it got particularly bad on March 19th, a Wednesday at lunch, I couldn't take anymore. I came up to the building department and the lady took my name, number, all my details. She said, oh, there's an inspector out in the field, he'll take a look at it and give you a call. I never heard anything back. Okay, so next day, I went online and did the portal to complain about a property. Never heard anything back from them. You know, he had all my contact information. So on March 21st, I contacted the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals and told Tom Hall about this. And so he went and checked it out, and he called me back and said, yeah, he concurred with my opinion of this thing. And he said to call Melissa Hayes, she's the chief building official, and she'll help you out. I never heard back from her either. So I'm here tonight to see if I can get city council to look into this and to compel the building department to enforce the zoning code. That building is zoned for office. There is no way you can say that running a landscaping business, a mulch distribution center, from there is office. They are not doing just Maple Knoll. They did do Maple Knoll, great, but they're doing facilities three miles away. I followed them up, three miles away. I mean, they're using, this Monford Heights company is doing business all over northern Hamilton County. And it, you know, it's just not, it's getting to be a drain on my business. And therefore, I appreciate anything you can do to look into this. It's, you know, a violation of the zoning code because it's not office use, and it's a nuisance. Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to address a couple of your issues, I do know the building department has been looking into this. I did have some conversation with our chief building official regarding this property as well. Businesses are permitted to have mulch piles on their property for 30 days. I know it may be a little bit longer than that based on what you're saying, but if you just make sure that you have your contact information there, I will make sure that Mrs. Hayes gets back with you tomorrow and can give you kind of an update in the status. I do know that they have some conversations with the contractors on site, and they did agree to turn off their backing alarm on their equipment as to not interfere with some of your, some of your business. So I think they are making a little bit of an effort to be a good neighbor, but we'll definitely look into it a little bit more to see how long they intend to be there to ensure that our regulations as far as mulch piles, et cetera, are cleaned up or moved within the appropriate amount of time.
Can I speak?
You can respond to that, you're fine.
I mean, it's been six weeks, and this has, you know, been going on a couple of years now. I think if we had a mulch pile on ours, you know, for several months, I think there'd be a problem. I just, the beeping, yeah, that's bad enough, but the sound of the trucks all day long going in and out, and they're not doing just Springdale, they're doing other communities, and they're using Springdale to do this.
Sure, I appreciate you sharing that information. Like I said, we'll make sure that Mrs. Hayes gets back in touch with you tomorrow to kind of give you an update and a status on where and what the inspectors have found in their trips out there.
Thank you, thank you for letting me speak, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the floor is open, if anyone else would like to address counsel for any reason. Second call? Third and final call? At this point, I'm closing communications in the audience. All right, next we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up, we have ordinance number 152025, this is a second reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 152025, an ordinance accepting a proposal under the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Strasser Construction Incorporated for the 2025 Annual Street Program Crack Seal and Cape Seal Project. Whereas the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program has advertised and received bids for the purchase of certain machinery, materials, supplies, and other articles and services that participants in the program can utilize. And whereas the city of Springdale, the city wishes to maintain various streets throughout the city through the application of crack seal and cape seal. And whereas Strasser Construction Incorporated was the lowest and best bidder through the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the labor, equipment, and materials to complete the city's crack seal and cape seal project with a proposal in the amount of $217,833.05. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, the city of Springdale accepts the state's specifications for the application of crack seal and cape seal and agrees that Strasser Construction Incorporated is the lowest and best bidder for the labor, equipment, and materials to complete the crack seal and cape seal project for the city in the amount of $217,833.05, the project. Section two, the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Strasser Construction Incorporated for the labor, equipment, and materials for the project, the agreement. Section three, the finance officer, tax commissioner is hereby authorized to pay Strasser Construction Incorporated the sum of $217,833.05 and 5 cents for the labor, equipment, and materials to complete the project consistent with the agreement. Section four, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section five, this ordinance will take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counselor, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 152025, it can be acted on tonight, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second, questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council on ordinance number 152025.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 152025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we'll move on to ordinance number 162025, this is also a second reading. Mr. Jacobs.
Ordinance number 162025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a mutual aid agreement for law enforcement between the city of Springdale, the city of Forest Park, and the city of Fairfield. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code provides that political subdivisions may enter into contracts for the purpose of obtaining police protection or additional police protection and for the purpose of obtaining additional police through mutual aid agreements. And whereas the city of Springdale, the city of Forest Park, and the city of Fairfield intend to provide reciprocal police services across jurisdictional lines to enhance the capabilities of law enforcement for the protection of citizens and property throughout their respective municipalities. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute a mutual aid agreement for law enforcement substantially in conformance with the attached Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference. Section two, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section three, this ordinance will take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counselor, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 162025, it can be acted on tonight, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second, questions or discussion? Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you to, obviously, our staff does an outstanding job, but also for the city of Fairfield and Forest Park, who, they had gone through a process with regard to this and came to an agreement before us. We were still doing some due diligence, and there were some things that we were asking to have adjusted, and they were willing to undo what they had already done to meet our needs. So I just want to say I appreciate city of Forest Park and Fairfield for that.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council on ordinance number 162025.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
up we have resolution number 92025. Mr. Jacobs.
Resolution number 92025, resolution authorizing the city administrator to impose a fee for police department video records. Whereas the City of Springdale, the city maintains a records management policy that includes the fees charged for the production of public records. And whereas HB 315 signed into law on January 2nd, 2025, authorizes political subdivisions to charge a fee to recover their actual costs associated with making police department video records available for inspection or copying pursuant to a public records request. And whereas council desires to authorize the city administrator to include such a fee in the city's record management policy. Now therefore be it ordained, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, council hereby authorizes the city administrator to include a fee for public records requests for police department video records as set forth in HB 315, not to exceed the actual cost associated with the video record for inspection or production, not to exceed the hourly and totally amounts as established, and total amounts as established by the Ohio Revised Code. Section two, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance number 172025. Are there any questions or discussion this evening? All right, seeing none, we will see this again at our next meeting. All right, next up we have resolution number 92025. Mr. Jacobs.
Resolution number 92025, resolution authorizing the city administrator to impose a fee for police department video records. Whereas the City of Springdale, the city maintains a records management policy that includes the fees charged for the production of public records. And whereas HB 315 signed into law on January 2nd, 2025, authorizes political subdivisions to charge a fee to recover their actual costs associated with making police department video records available for inspection or copying pursuant to a public records request. And whereas council desires to authorize the city administrator to include such a fee in the city's record management policy. Now therefore be it ordained, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, council hereby authorizes the city administrator to include a fee for public records requests for police department video records as set forth in HB 315, not to exceed the actual cost associated with the video record for inspection or production, not to exceed the hourly and totally amounts as established, and total amounts as established by the Ohio Revised Code. Section two, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121 dot 22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section three, this resolution, this resolution shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the reading of resolution R92025. It can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Yul, maybe you know this question, but how is this fee determined?
Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will defer to Mr. Braun. He has a little more background on this whole house bill.
Mr. Braun.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fee was set by the legislature. They passed this as part of a appropriation ordinance in December, and this is the maximum fee that you can charge, $75 an hour, up to a total fee of $750. So what it means is, it's not going to be $750 for every request. It's, breaks it down and says it's based on the actual amount of time for legal review, redactions, staff time, things like that. So it's an up to $750 fee. And again, the legislature set it. We didn't choose that amount per hour.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up question on that. Is there a carve-out? Do you know for somebody who's part of an incident, so say somebody had a police report or police incident where they're named on it, do they have, is there a carve-out, or are they in the same boat as any, any other one in the public?
There is not. What I will indicate to you, and I have talked with our police department about this, if it's something as simple as a document, which obviously we don't charge for those when we request, but if it's something very simple, I think we've decided it's like less than 15 minutes, they're not going to charge. So again, there's not anything built in, but they're going to kind of look at each request to see what's involved. So.
Right, but this ordinance lets the city administration set the fee schedule. I guess the question is probably for administration then is, in that fee schedule, will there be a carve-out if it's somebody's named in the police incident and they're trying to get that video, or is there not that flexibility?
There, there is no official carve-out, just so you know, in the legislation.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the idea, there'd be a universal fee that would not exceed what the state legislature's already put in place. If, if someone had a, and someone could ask for, you know, body worn footage for any number of things, but from a practical standpoint, if somebody found themselves charged with something, they'd get it through discovery anyway, so that, they'd have that availability. If somebody was not charged and they just wanted to know what happened on a certain day with a certain officer and interaction, they'd have to go through that process. The big thing with regard to this is, it takes a lot of people hours when folks are going through, they're redacting things. There, there's times when you'll have an officer holding a piece of paper or holding an ID. They'll have to blur those things out. There may be things with regard to other individuals that may be minors, that have to blur those things out. So for, you know, a 15, 20, 30-minute video, we may have staff spending much more time than that going through to redact things. And, and so this is something that will help recruit some of that time that's spent. But i- if someone's charged, they'll be able to get through discovery just like they could now, without a cost.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Brown, if you poll council on resolution R92025.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R92025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, moving along. Next up on our agenda is old business. Is there anything, anyone on council would like to bring forward any old business this evening? Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's maybe not necessarily old business. This really is kind of a public service announcement. Several years back, the Ohio State Legislature approved the right turn on red, and it has become second nature. Unfortunately, there are a lot of drivers that have forgotten the last two words, after stop, and that is becoming a frequent occurrence. The other thing is, with the warm weather, there are pedestrians out, and I witnessed today, luckily, thank God, my wife nearly got taken out by an automobile on Crest, or not Crescentville, Chesterdale. And the guy, you know, she had the, the walk, you know, said pedestrian has a right of way, and it was a close call. I did get a scream at her, so. But do, you know, make yourself aware that, and it, because it, this case, it was an adult, but it could be a small child, and that's, you know, a whole nother thing. And finally, part of a backwash of our process with Heritage Hill over there, the frequency of people, I applaud them for carpooling, but they're parking in the traffic lane, waiting for people to pick up people instead of using a driveway or parking in a spot. During daylight hours, that's not too bad. During dark, it's a real quandary. And also, Amazon Kroger, we witnessed an Amazon driver today pull up, driver going the wrong direction at the end of a driveway, so he could get on driver's side when there was space across the street that, you know, and I know they're, they're quick usually. But just be courteous to the, the rest of the motoring public out there, and please, please, please be cognizant of pedestrians and as they approach the crosswalk.
All right, thanks for that. And I know safer streets is something that we will be talking about as a council as we do more developments. So it's something to keep in mind, those call-outs and how to address that. Part of that safer street initiative is supposed to account for that. So the way we design our streets changed, we talked about that with the thoroughfare program. So that's certainly suitable to talk about now. All right, any other old business anyone else would like to bring forward? All right, on to new business. Is there any new business anyone on council would like to bring forward? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to meetings and announcements. Ms. Sullivan Weiscup.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next Tuesday, April the 8th, at 7:00 PM in these chambers, Planning Commission will meet.
Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick announcement. This Saturday, the community center will be holding its annual shred event, and that will run from 9:30 AM until 12:30 PM. IDs are required, and that'll all take place in the parking lot, and there'll be some scientists and people directing people on where to go to drop off their documents for shredding.
Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Civil Service Commission will meet April 3rd, 2:00 PM, adjacent to these chambers.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, want folks to know, the rec center is doing a golden egg hunt every day. It's already started. So along our bike path, there's a golden egg. You find it, you bring it in. There's a number of different rewards and treats you get, and they'll put it back out there. So something for everyone to check out.
And just as a hint, the egg's about this big, and it is very much golden inside. I have seen it. It does exist. It's real. It is, it is large. Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope that egg is heavy with all this wind coming tonight. The BZA meeting scheduled for this, of the 22nd of this month at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board of Health will meet Thursday, April 10th, at 6:30 in these chambers.
All right, seeing no more announcements, we'll move on to communications in the audience. This is the second and final time this evening where anyone in the audience would like to address council for any reason. Simply come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you can address council for up to five minutes. At this point, the floor is now open for communications in the audience. Second call? Third and final call. All right, I'm closing communications in the audience. Next we'll move on to a recap of legislative items and legislation in development with Mr. Jacobs in whichever order makes the most sense as you present.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, as you review your legislative summary, item one was addressed by ordinance 152025, an ordinance accepting a proposal under the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Strasser Construction Incorporated for the 2025 Annual Street Program Crack Seal and Cape Seal Project. That received a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item true, item two was addressed by ordinance 162025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a mutual aid agreement for law enforcement between the City of Springdale, the City of Forest Park, and the City of Fairfield, that received a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item three was addressed by ordinance 172025, an ordinance declaring certain city property as surplus property and authorizing the sale, disposal, or transfer of surplus property. That received a first reading and was approved, or no, that will receive a second reading on the 16th. Item four, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to impose a fee for police department video records was addressed by resolution 92025, receiving a first reading and was acted upon with seven affirmative votes. And item five will be addressed at our upcoming meeting on April 16th, a first reading for an ordinance amending section 153 dot 252 F6A1 of the Springdale Code of Ordinances regulating the permitted number of domesticated pets, unless there's anything else forthcoming for administration.
Counsel, anything else? All right, and with that, all we have left tonight is item 16.
Move to adjourn.
All right, we adjourned. Thank you, everyone.